I will call our work session meeting. And we have two work sessions today. I'll call the meeting to order. The first item is discussion of our city council salaries and we'll spend about 15 to 20 minutes. Oh, I forgot to ask if we are recording.
Hello?
Hi, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, we're recording.
Great, great, all right. So the first item we have is our city council salaries discussion for 15 to 20 minutes. And then the next item that will start around six is the legislative update with Ann Lucheski. So we will kick it off and I'll just hand it over to City Manager Rodriguez right away.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're looking for direction on city council salaries for fiscal years 2021 and 2022. In the past, the council has set their increases based on the management and general services pay plans of the previous year. If council did that for the upcoming two weeks, then it would be a 3% increase in 2021 and likely a 3% increase in 2022. The increases for the for the general services and management pay plans haven't been set for 2021 because that would be done through the budgeting process. However, Richfield has a long history of providing all employees the same cost of living adjustment, and we've already settled four out of five with four out of five of our unions for a 3% increase for 2021. Council has also reviewed other metro area council salaries in deciding their future salaries or deciding future council salaries. The survey was attached to the staff report. So depending on your direction tonight, we will then bring a proposed ordinance to the council in future meetings, and it would set the council salaries for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And it's important to get this direction tonight, not only to inform our budget process, which we are turning in our initial budgets this week, but also to make sure that you're setting the council salaries before the before the election this fall.
Great, is that all, City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for that, for the overview. I'll open it up to council discussion on the city council salaries and setting them for the next two years. Does anyone have any comments? Councilmember Supple?
Yes, I do.
Oh, one second. If you could just a second, Councilmember Garcia, and then go after Councilmember Supple.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
Um, I, under normal circumstances, I would think you'd just kind of do your normal cost of living. But with the pandemic and looking at ways that we can be conserving funds and that kind of thing, I think in this year, I would I would be in favor of just keeping our salaries the same and not doing an increase because of the pandemic. I think this is a very unusual situation, and we're looking for ways to save costs. That would be my first reaction, would say, in this unusual situation, that we would just hold steady. But I'm happy to listen to anybody else's input.
Great. Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, no, I agree. I agree completely with with Supple. What I would, and one of the things is this pandemic has really put a squeeze big time on our economy. And so the health-wise and the economy is placed together, and we, I would not support any increase at all at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland?
I guess I hear that, and I'm, um, if that's how everyone else is feeling, I'm okay with that. I, I think continuing the increases makes sense. I guess we're, we would not be, if we did not increase, we would not be that out of line with other cities. But I, I don't think any of us would, um, would say that we're like overcompensated for the amount of time this ends up being. And I, I think if we want to, if we want to have, if we want people to step up in the future and be part of city council and for that to be a financially feasible option for the amount of time it takes, I think we do need to be considering what what we're paying these positions. Because I do think it's incredibly difficult to, like, because of how little you're paid, you have to basically have a full-time job. But then it's, yeah, so I guess I would be in support of of continuing the trend of the 3% increase. But if if everyone else is leaning toward no increase, it's not a huge chunk of money that that would save us. I think it'd be like 15 to 1800 somewhere in there. But that's money we wouldn't have to find somewhere else. So I'm open to where others are at.
Well, you know, Mayor, I just want to say that, you know, this this pandemic has affected us in many, many ways. And I, for one, as a member of the public, you know, I would, I would be, it would make me so uncomfortable to vote for a pay increase. And I know when people run, you know, and it's an incentive maybe for them when they run. But quite frankly, you know, traditionally, it's been that that the city council does more in terms of volunteering their time and their efforts than they're getting paid for. But, you know, I also think that we're doing that because we care about the community, and I volunteer whatever time I will have. You know, it just, it just doesn't make sense for me to justify voting for a pay increase to our constituency.
Okay, this is Mayor Riquel Gonzalez, and I just wanted to share, Councilmember Troutman is not able to join us, but he did share some comments that he wanted me to pass along. He just wanted to remind folks and the public that we clearly don't do this work for the pay. And that's very evident and and that, um, he, he didn't, he said he would not be in support of any big increase. He didn't seem, you know, I think he wasn't opposed to the increase that was in the in the work session notes. But he just wanted to remind people overall that it really prohibits a lot of amazing potential council member and mayors to apply for these positions or to run for these positions because the pay is really is very, very little. And so he was fine with with what was suggested. He didn't give comments as to no increase, but he just did want to make the comment about how this low pay really prohibits a lot of community members who would be great folks to run for these positions. And then he had sent me a comment just now saying that, and I don't know if he, you know, how he was saying this because it was in a text, but he said he would gladly take a pay decrease if it meant we could have a half-time administrative assistant that served the council and the mayor. So I don't think that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if he says that as a joke or if he really means that and that he would want to explore it. I can't, um, I don't know. So I did want to just pass that along to Councilmen from from Councilmember Troutman. In terms of the discussion, you know, I think at the end of the day, not taking a pay increase for next year or taking the the standard increase is pretty much symbolic. And I would be in support of symbolically saying, you know, we're not going to take an increase this year because of the pandemic, and there's a lot of impact. Because as Councilmember Wayland said, the difference is is really not that much, and it would be more about the messaging. Councilmember Wayland?
Um, can I clarify, are we, are we deciding now for the next two years? Is that correct?
Councilmember Wayland, that is correct.
Could, so potentially, could we, given the conditions this year, go with no increase this year, but then return to whatever the the negotiated raises for the following year?
You certainly could.
Good. I guess we don't know how long the pandemic impacts will be.
So I don't know, yeah, I don't know if this is, um, if this is enough guidance, City Manager Rodriguez, to help. I don't know if that, since also Councilmember Troutman is not here and he hasn't weighed in on this discussion, if it makes sense to bring back two options, with one is the standard increase and the other one is no increase. And and then when we vote on it, there can be an additional conversation or, I don't know how you would plan to proceed, but do you have what you need?
Mayor, it would be helpful if you and other council members that are here for the meeting could weigh in on Councilmember Wayland's idea of a 0% increase this year and return you to the past practice of setting it to the management and general services pay plans for 2022.
Great. Councilmember Supple?
Um, being that we don't know how long the pandemic is going to go, and it could go a couple more years, I would say for the next two times, we just keep it even. And then after that, return to the policy, because I do think it's a good policy. It's just that during a pandemic, there's a lot of of unknowns. And so I would just be in favor of just having no increase for the two years.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Garcia, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. No, I, I agree with Councilmember Supple. It makes complete sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I just want to clarify, I don't know if this is the same as what Councilmember Supple said or not. But I don't know, I mean, I could just announce this next year for the following year because, as Councilmember Supple said, we don't know. Is that what you said to Councilmember Supple? Or you just said a standard increase?
Well, what I was saying is, I was listening to a speaker this weekend about the pandemic, and they're saying that there's a good possibility that the effects will continue for a while. And so what I'm saying is, next year and the year after, that we stay the same because there's a good chance the pandemic will last during that time. And then after that, I think we can return to the normal policy. This is just a one-time thing for these two years because of the pandemic. And that's my opinion, and I'll go with whatever the rest of the council decides.
No, and I, and I agree with that.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, when you say stay the same, does that mean no increase is staying the same? We can't hear you, Councilmember Supple. I think she might be having some connectivity issues. Well, we can wait for her to get back. I just wanted to get clarification on what stayed the same meant, if that meant no increase or understanding that.
Mayor?
City Manager Rodriguez?
My understanding was a flat salary, which would be 0% increase from Councilmember Supple. I mean, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but if she's able to, she could also chat her answer, and we could say it publicly.
Got it. Yeah, I do see that she's still on the on the meeting. So Councilmember Supple, if you're able to put in the chat box what you meant, that would be great. Or to show your comments in the chat until you get up and running. I'm fine with that. I, if there's a way to assess on an annual basis, just because we have no clue, I'd be more comfortable with making a decision from two years from now, right now, because things are so unpredictable. So if we have a little room for flexibility to make these decisions on a yearly basis because of the situation, I think that makes sense, if that's something that can be a part of it.
Well, I think I think clearly, clearly Mary has stated already what she, what she would recommend, how she sees things. So I think, I think we've, we've kind of already set what, what we're coming from, where we're coming from. And just to hear her say it again, it would be just repetitive, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep, and she just wrote in the chat box, she's saying that two years flat and then look at returning to the policy after that. And that's what Councilmember Garcia concurs with, and I'm fine with that. If there's a possibility to assess it next year or the year after, it would be great. If not, I'm fine with that. And then Councilmember Wayland? Oh, you already? I'm waiting. Okay, so, City Manager Rodriguez, do you have what you need?
Um, Mayor, I think so. I, I think it, because of the way it's written, the goal is, is that this council sets the salary for then until the next election. One thing I can look at is maybe some financial indicators, so that for the 2022, it can be either a flat, you know, 0% increase, or if, you know, some key indicators are that we're out of the recession, that you could consider going to the, uh, setting it to the management and general services pay plan. We could look at that as an ordinance. Otherwise, I think I have what I need for the two years.
Great. Thank you so much, City Manager Rodriguez. Thank you to the council. We'll move to our next work session item, which is a legislative update with Ann Lucheski. I see Ann is on the line. Hi, Ann. Thank you for visiting us.
Hello, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Hi. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Manager Rodriguez. And it's really wonderful to see some of the other council members. It's, I know many of you and have worked with many of you, so it's really nice to see you in a new way. Um, what would you, what would you like me to do, Madam Mayor? Let's make a report or?
Yep, I'll just ask City Manager Rodriguez, because I don't know, I didn't pass it to you. So is there anything that you wanted to open up with, or should we just ask for a legislative update?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know you know Ann Lucheski well because she has been providing us wonderful updates all legislative session, which I really appreciate. And I have also been able to have an every other week conversation with her. So being able to dive in more deeply into what was happening at the Capitol has really been invaluable for us this year. So I think just an overall recap of what happened this session, how it ended, what we can possibly hope for this summer yet, and then, yeah, and then take, open it up for questions.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members and Manager Rodriguez. Really, it's great to be here with you. I don't, I might have turned my video off. Am I on? I think I'm kind of going on and off. I'm not sure what's happening.
You are going back and forth. Now you're on.
Okay, um, and it's really, I know former legislator, former state representative Garcia is on the line, so she can certainly tell you how crazy the place is. But just to back up a little bit, and for a few of you that I don't know, I do come from local governments, just like you all. I served on a city council for a few terms in the suburbs, and then I served nine terms in the Minnesota Legislature. So now I lobby, and it's been an honor to lobby for you. So as the manager said, we've been in communicational session, having a great working relationship with your legislators, as you know. Representative Howard and Senator Wicklund and Senator Torres Ray are all working very hard for you and and really doing a great job. And of course, with George Floyd's murder now, the focus has really changed. And particularly Senator Torres Ray, as you know, is a huge leader in that area. And in fact, I, Madam Mayor, I got to see you testify in the House hearing, so you did a great job, and that was wonderful. And I know your community is really impacted and touched by all of this. So, you know, of course, session, none of that was in play, and yet during regular session, most of the work still did not get done. And that was because of COVID. And so as we've all been following, you know, Governor Walz's approach, and you all as a city have had to make a ton of decisions about what to close, when to open them, who, you know, should you hire seasonal workers, or what, you know, you've, you've had a difficult time. COVID changed everything, and then, of course, we thought nothing could change it even more. And then George Floyd happened between the ending of the first session and the special session. So, you know, I think you're all pretty politically adept. So just a little bit about understanding how we work for you. We work in a bipartisan way. Our team is 10 full-time lobbyists, and we're Republicans and Democrats who have deep roots in all four caucuses in the governor's office. So we really take that bipartisan approach so that we can work with Senator Gazzalca to get what the city of Richfield needs and Representative Dowd, and then Speaker Hortman, and Senator Kent, and the governor, so, and your legislators. So I think, you know, the best way to sum up the special session is, I think, at the end of the day, the Senate probably didn't understand how serious the governor and the Minnesota House was about implementing a much bigger percentage of the Posse Caucus's agenda. And you all know and are familiar with the Posse Caucus, but I'll tell you, much of the legislature had never even heard of them before and are learning who they are and what they stand for. One thing to think about is, in the Minnesota House and Senate, the combined, the Democrats hold about 107 seats, I think it is, and the Republicans hold about 97. So they're pretty equally split. There are 19 members of the Minnesota Legislature that belong to the Posse Caucus, so they're about 20-plus percent of the Democratic combined, you know, set of legislators. So certainly a force, certainly found their voices in a big way. And I really think until that issue is addressed, not much is going to change. I don't think we're going to get a bonding bill or a tax bill or housing money or any of those things until something is addressed there. As you all know, the governor has to come back every 30 days and ask the legislature for permission to keep his power. Of course, the Minnesota House will continue to give him that. So he will keep his power as long as he needs, but he has to come back every 30 days. So that allows, you know, the conversation to start once again, every 30 days about a bonding bill, a tax bill, what about police reforms? You know, I don't think that we could expect in three weeks here that much is going to happen in the July 12 special session. It's possible. If you're watching what's happening between Senator Gazzalca and the governor since adjournment, it's just gotten worse. And today, three chairs in the Senate Republican Caucus held a press conference a few hours ago saying that Commissioner Lucero, Governor Walz's Human Rights Commissioner, was not qualified to do what, to look into the Minneapolis Police Department, and they are asking for someone else to do that. So things continue to sour. You know, if they want to get their minds together to get a deal by July 12, it's possible, for sure. There's a holiday in the middle there. It doesn't feel like it, but then they'd be back on August 12 again. So, you know, I think we just have to continue to push for Wood Lake. I know you're also working on 77, the underpass, and as you know, unfortunately, Senator Sengham's bonding bill at the end of session, the very last one that he put out, did not include that project. So, you know, it's difficult for people to see how to get their things across the finish line without this this big trade of reforms for a bonding and tax bill. You know, we certainly know that there's a few other items that really matter to the city of Richfield and and many cities, but particularly for you. The workers' comp issue that the legislature said, aha, we will, good idea, cities, we will cover your first responders who might get COVID, and we will make that a presumption, but they never figured out how to pay for it. That still has not happened. Cities are still on the hook for paying for that. That's something that's unresolved. The other big piece that is unresolved for cities is the splitting up with federal money. The governor has always had the power to split that money up. I think what he was trying to do, I can't speak for him, obviously, but he was trying to say, rather than just split up the money how I want, I will let you all try to come together, Republicans and Democrats. That never happened either. We broadly expect that the governor will probably announce that he's going to give that money out this week. He could wait until the next special session. He's sending all the signals that he would like the cities to receive that money by the end of this month. The process for that, not to get too in the weeds, but just to remind people, he can either call a special session to do that, specifically that item, if there's agreement, so he could bring them all in at the end of June, they could all vote to pass out the money. He can also just do it, but what he must do is present his plan for distributing the money to all the cities to what's called the LAC, the Legislative Advisory Commission, which is made up of all the four caucus leaders, the tax chairs, the finance chairs. And whether they would approve of his recommendation or not, it's, they're simply advisory, they don't have veto authority, and he can implement his plan. So we might see him announce this week that he intends to distribute the money to the cities and how he's going to do it, and then he would later go to the LAC, who would have to just hear it, and then they can't stop it. So we're, we're not clear yet how he's going to do that, but we should be seeing that money. I think one thing for the mayor and all of you in the council to just think about is, you receive that money. I know some cities feel that even the money that's contemplated that they would receive, they might not be able to spend it all on COVID. Even if you're doing really good accounting, it has to be spent on COVID. It cannot be used for revenue replacement. So many suburbs in particular think they might end up having to return some of them, and that's some of it. And that's what the federal law says. If you don't spend it on COVID, you have to give it back. So it's not, you can't put it in your general fund, you can't use it for something else. And as you know, the Congress is looking to, you know, they're having a disagreement about, well, can't we just have it for revenue replacement? And so far, you can't. I know some cities are now saying, well, one of the things they figured out they can use it for is you can come up with a grant program for businesses in the city of Richfield to help them. And you could use excess monies in that way, and that'll be something I think you'll have to think about as a council going forward. Others feel that when we get to November 15, which is the date that all the money has to be expended, that the Congress may at that time say, if you have anything left, you could use it for revenue replacement. So you can imagine, if you hadn't spent it all giving business grants, you would have it to help fill your levy. But that's all unclear. So once again, like everything else, you all have been dealing with since March, a whole bunch of uncertainty still to go, but hopefully we'll get the money sent out to the city of Richfield through the governor this this week or next week, we hope, and at least, at least starting to get that money flowing. So with that, I'll just stop and see if you have any questions for me or, Madam Mayor, what else you'd like me to speak on?
Thank you so much for that overview. That was really comprehensive. I see Councilmember Supple has a question.
All right, hopefully, since I switched, you can hear me now. All right, awesome. So if we did expended money through, say, the HRA for rental assistance or the EDA for small business assistance, does that count as COVID money? Is that money, could that money be replaced for that? Or does it have to be something that the city itself does?
You know, that, Councilmember Supple, that's a really good question. I'm not actually positive about that. And I can look into that. Manager Rodriguez may know, and the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities, which you belong to, are both trying to issue that guidance as quickly as possible. But, you know, I don't know if that would mean if your EDA has a majority of elected officials on it or your HRA or, you know, every city's got a different setup. Some put council members, some, some have to, I assume you vote to approve their budgets. So I, I'm not exactly sure, and I can look into that and get back to Manager Rodriguez and see what I can find out. Although she may even know. I don't have the answer.
We, we are looking into it.
Okay.
Councilmember Wayland?
Just wanted to piggyback on that. I was thinking the exact same thing, and and not even so much replacing it, but just knowing that our, our business grants were not very large. Our rental assistance money feels like a drop in the bucket to the need these last few months. So I, um, I would hope that we could figure out a way, if that is an acceptable use. I know we've talked about, not just ongoing rental assistance, but possible, like eviction prevention for whenever the eviction moratorium is lifted, those kinds of things. But, yeah, I will look forward to learning more, which seems to be the motto lately, but thanks for the updates.
And if I may, Councilmember Wayland, one thing we've also heard is we're, if the governor keeps his, if he keeps asking to have his powers renewed, which we anticipate, he may extend the eviction moratorium. So I think that you'll want to think about the timing of assistance, depending on how long that assistance from the state goes on. And I, I think we don't know that yet either, but And I, I think we don't know that yet either, but we'll continue to update you as we know.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Is there anything you want to ask or share?
Well, I, I was going to say, you know, the Minnesota House has got a session weekly that comes out once a week. And you can either get it electronically or I think you could get it sent to your home. And that's, that's packed with all the information you need about what's going on throughout the, the House. And then the, the Senate has also got one, it's called, I think it's called the Senate Briefly or something like that. But the other thing is, you know, this is the first time we've ever had a lobbyist report to us. And I'm just, I'm just wondering and, and I know that in my old age, I'm getting, you know, pretty conservative. But the thing, the, the thing is, is that, you know, we have four legislators that, that we can, we can ask specific information from. And, and so, you know, I, I think for us going directly to a lobbyist is not in our best interest. I think we should go through them and the lobbyists should, should, you know, do what they're doing, their everyday activity. But I, I would rather communicate directly with our legislators.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. We can certainly have our legislators come, report as well, Councilmember Garcia. Getting back to the, the CARES funding, we have from the very beginning been tracking our expenses in case there were opportunities to be reimbursed. So we've been tracking not only just overtime, but also salaries spent on COVID. So for management and public safety. And public safety for sure was an eligible expense. Also, any kind of mitigation that we were doing. So all the Plexiglas that we put up at the stores, you know, providing people laptops so they could work from home. All, all of those mitigations we have been tracking through our, our accounting system. So.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Councilmember Whalen.
I'm, uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you brought that up because I, I was wondering, are we still short on laptops? And would that be if we were to receive this money? I mean, could that be used toward some of the tech hardware that we've been needing to invest in?
We are going to look into it. Right now, all we have are like general guidelines from LMC. And Kennedy and Graven gave us like buckets of what would be eligible. So, and we are waiting for this agreement to come through because if you get into the weeds on it and then, and then it changed. So, so now we're, it's time for us to put some details to it and, and see if we can do that. But yes, because right now we have folks working from home, but some of them are working on their personal devices and that leaves us vulnerable to cybersecurity. And so we have some real concerns about that. And there has been an uptick in cyber security attacks recently or cyber attacks.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. I just want to chime in with a couple of comments. It's been really great to see Richfield's representatives, Richfield's legislators really just doing some excellent work. And, you know, just being a part of that with them on almost what feels like a regular basis. You know, just this week, Melissa Wicklund was in and, and Representative Howard were in a 494 corridor commission where we're working together to really figure out what the updates are going to look like at 35W and 494. And they did a really great job in supporting Richfield's perspective and reinforcing our perspective on that huge regional project. That is one of the, is the most important corridor in the state of Minnesota. So it's great to see them. We know Patricia Torres Ray has been doing excellent work on many fronts as well, ranging from education to police reform. So it's just been really great to be in touch with them and to see them really fighting hard for our community. So I have really appreciated their work on that. There was a couple of questions. You, you kind of talked about these things more generally, but because they are so specific to Richfield, could you talk a little bit about, and I, and maybe you don't have the answer, but do you have any sense on how some of the Posse Caucus's police reform, things might go forward or not? I mean, this is an opportunity to make real change in reform that is absolutely needed. And as Richfield knows, we have been fighting to make these changes at the local level, but then also seeing that these are things that have to be done at the state level, like changing the police arbitration system. So if you could speak to anything you might have there, maybe it's, we need to sit and wait, but man, this is a time for some real change. And then second, if you can speak to anything regarding or related to the underpass as well, just to update our residents on that.
Sure. I think on the Posse Caucus and, and, you know, it's the people of color indigenous. As I said, I, I think people have misunderstood or not understood what people of color have been trying to say at the legislature for a while. And unfortunately, a tragedy has finally got people paying attention. I think at the core, it felt like that the Posse Caucus, I think they had 22 proposals, some that are pretty minor, some that are pretty major. And, you know, I think maybe the Senate Republicans thought, well, we'll just do is we'll take half of those or five of those or seven of those or something, and that'll be a compromise. And I think what the Posse Caucus is trying to say is you can't compromise on justice. You know, it's not just pick some of these and that's good enough. So the Posse Caucus reaction to the Senate Republicans' offer was just straight up, no way. Very clear. The House did come back and dropped a few. The House Democrats did drop a few things they wanted within the Posse Caucus agenda to try to get a deal by the end of session. And they were, one piece was that county attorneys did not, the Posse Caucus would like all cases moved to the Attorney General's office. So they were, they were willing to drop that and for, I don't know why, but I can't remember what the other one was that they dropped. But I mean, you know, another piece to think about as a city is, is there's pieces in these proposals that affect you all as people who are running a city. So one of them is residency requirements. We have Democrats and Republicans for residency requirements for law enforcement. We have Democrats and Republicans against residency requirements for law enforcement. Obviously, cities as a rule don't like them. They like to be able to pick talent from wherever they can get it. And although some cities don't feel that way, they want all their sworn officers to reside in their communities. So that is a city issue that's, that's being debated. The arbitration issue, which I think is key and sticky and is going to be very hard is you have one party over there that's historically kind of a law enforcement willing to look at arbitration and another party who's usually for labor union rights, which would, which work very hard to keep employee benefits and to retain employees and so that they can be returned to work. And so they're coming to a head and you're seeing these alignments of people kind of being in the opposite position they're normally in because of the police brutality. And I think that's going to be very difficult for people to figure out, how do you write that exactly so that it works for cities? It works for law enforcement and it works for people's civils, civil rights. One of the things that was dragged into the issue is applying arbitration to all unions. So of course, immediately, education unions and other unions said, you know, we don't want you to change the way we do our work. So there's a lot left to be done there. And I think it's going to just get harder, not easier, to wade through the arbitration issue. And I, and I know cities have a lot of, you know, they want to empower their, their, their chiefs to remove cops that are, shouldn't be there. And, and yet they're often very supportive of a, a class of workers. So I think these are going to get more and more difficult. On the underpass, you know, honestly, I was a little shocked that the Senate didn't have the 77 underpass in the bill because the Senate Republicans have very clearly said in their bonding bill, they wanted many transportation projects, which is really not where transportation projects usually are. They're usually in a transportation bill related to gas taxes. But the Senate Republicans said, you know, we want to do wastewater treatment and lots of transportation projects. So this seemed like an opening for Richfield because of this transportation project. It wasn't included. I, I don't know why. It was included in the House, but I know your manager has done incredible work to work with Mindoc Commissioner Kelleher. And there's been a lot of conversations about how to get this done. I know late, the new proposal that's out there is problematic and a surprise, I think. And I heard you, Madam Mayor, talk about your work on the I-494 corridor commission. I actually used to serve on that and I understand what a great group that is. And I'm glad that Mike and Melissa or Representative Howard and Senator Wicklund are working on that because that's a super important piece. And for all, for to wait 25 years and do it incorrectly would just be a huge miss. So, you know, I, I think all of that remains to be seen. You know, you, the, your manager Rodriguez and I talked about all the allies you have that I think we're going to have to work with, you know, the new Met Council Chair, who should care with all the transit that's right there and Commissioner Kelleher. Frank Hornstein has been a big friend to Richfield and he's the Transportation Chair in the House. So I think really getting people to understand not only the design, but then the funding of the 77 underpass all has to work together. I do think if a bonding bill goes, I mean, I, you know, I hate to predict, but I, I do think you're going to get it. I think the Senate is just doing what they should do, which is, hey, we're putting our members' projects in. And then you have to make a trade. The House did carry the project and I know all of your legislators have worked very hard and they understand how important it is to all of you and they are doing everything they can. The Senate Minority Bonding Bill did have the project in it. So Senator Torres Ray did have it in the minority bill and then, and Senator Wicklund and, and Mike Howard. So everybody's worked to get it into their caucus's bill and, and it's in, it's in those. It's just not all the way across the finish line.
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, the what I, what I really would like Anne to do is, is when she started to work and she said, you've got to work in nonpartisan, you know, we, we all know that. But how, you know, I wish that there was some way that we could all go back to working in a nonpartisan way. This, this political stuff is just bullshit. You know, we, we've got to work together across the aisle and, and do the very best that we can. But, and I know that Lentesky's group is, you know, it's a pretty, pretty, what do you want to call it? Pretty prominent group there at the legislature. And I know that you command a lot of respect. But, you know, I, I just, it just, you know, it's time and time again. It's the same thing over and over and over, you know, that we have to fight the same fight. Sometimes we have to go over to their side, they have to come over to our side. Let's work together, people.
Absolutely.
Can you make that happen, Anne? Can you?
Well, we're sure going to try. We're sure going to try. I mean, you know, and I think, you know, Representative Garcia or Councilmember Garcia, you can certainly relate to this. So one of the team members working for you is the most recent Chief of Staff to the Senate Republican. So it was Senator Gazalka's right-hand person. And he's on our team. And so, you know, that is the, that is the kind of relationships we pride ourselves on, that this can't be partisan. It can't be a bunch of Democrats want a project or a bunch of Republicans want a project. Because Richfield is just people and they want their project. So we completely understand that and the 77 underpass has to happen. And you're completely right, Councilmember Garcia. This is, this is not a political project and it can't be treated that way. That's why we have to make the arguments to everybody, no matter where they stand, no matter what party they're in, why this project's so necessary, including Senator Senjum, who is the bonding chair in the Senate Caucus and lives in Rochester. And we need him to understand why this has to happen.
Right. Anne, how is Dan Larson doing?
He's doing great. He's doing great.
Good. We'll give him our best.
I will.
Great. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to thank everybody because I know you guys were there and giving us lots of information. And Mayor Rick and Gonzalez was testifying and I know a lot of people were working hard. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? Thank you so much for visiting us and thank you for keeping us up to date on such a regular basis. And we really hope that things turn out for the best this session for all of our, our residents, for the whole state. This is a time for real transformation and change. And I hope that we take this opportunity to make it happen. And thank you for doing that on our behalf.
You know, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just, I just wanted to say that those constant emails that we get from Anne have been very, very helpful. And, you know, and, and because it's, it's a constant daily or, or, you know, update for us. And I think that keeps us in the loop and that's something that we appreciate.
Well, thank you. And we'll start those back up again as soon as they're called back with special session. I'll be sending you emails again. If they do it ahead of the July 12 special session, you'll know. We'll also let you know immediately what the governor decides on the 841 million. So we were doing them during session, then we did them during special session. Now we're waiting for the next special session or action. And so you'll, you'll hear from me again as soon as possible.
Good.
Thank you so much. All right, well, I will adjourn our work session.